All right. Good morning. I have a one-hour speech that I cannot -- that I can't say. I was given 90 seconds, so you could read the entire speech at my personal newsletter, Anyways. Lalo, right there. An amazing cartoonista and radio show host. The most beloved San Diego County native in Los Angeles since Pete Wilson. A Hollywood chingón. Migramouse, which we saw earlier. Daniel Deportado, which I think is going to make a cameo this election cycle. The 4-hour power, the epitome of a mensch, someone who gives back to the community he loves and stands up to the losers that want to bully good people. A proud Zacatecano who is not a convicted felon or a bigot. My sometimes colleague and forever compa, the greatest Mexican with classes ever. Lalo, if you could stand up here. I've only been mistaken for you three times today. But those three times may I get confused with genius for the rest of my life. Congratulations and renew border town.
The LA riots/ uprising was really the birth of La Cucaracha. And so I feel very much LA forever. And it really spurred me to -- yeah. It really spurred me to activism and to combine it, like any good Chicano artist, combine activism with your art and do it for the community as much as possible. Having said that, I'll do all the posters that you want me to do. And just go in your budgets, dig deep. Thanks again to everybody. Thanks to iPad 6, Emelda, and everybody that spoke, Jeff, Martha, Stavol, Consuelo, my family. And that's it. Read me every day in the LA Times. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Deleon, followed by Councilmember Park.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I too also want to associate my comments with my colleagues. You know, Councilman Padilla, thank you very much, you know, for bringing this up together. And I like the way that --
Mr. Deleon, one moment, please. I just want to let everybody know, there will be no disruption to this council meeting. Anyone who shouts out while someone else is speaking will be removed from this council chambers. So that's the only warning I'm going to give to anybody in this council chambers. There won't be disruption to this meeting. Okay, whoever is shouting out, can you please --
Yes.
You're excluded from the meeting pursuant to Rule 12. All right. Mr. Deleon, please continue.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Good morning, everyone. I'm here to tell my story about pretextual stops. I'm a staff member of Community Coalition. I'm with Push LA as a member. And this has been going on for decades. I mean, really decades. As a young man, I get stopped by the police, I guess because my Chevy car was a two-tone primer, you know, first car I had. And I get stopped for no reason. Decades later, get stopped for the same thing, you know, just driving, having a nice time in the community. And it's like, first thing they ask you is --
Can you pause this?
Are you on parole?
Speaker, I'm sorry. We're going to pause your time. I'm sorry. And Stacy Cigar Bowlinger, you're disrupting the meeting and you're interrupting this speaker as he's trying to give his public comment. So please be silent, or you'll be removed from this meeting immediately. I'm sorry, sir. Go ahead.
Decades later, you get stopped for no reason, having a good time, riding, just enjoying your music, windows down because you don't have air conditioning. And the first thing they ask you is, are you on parole probation? I haven't did anything. That leads to search my car if I'm on parole probation. It's the same thing for decades. Now it's like, they're going to stop you, they're going to have seven police cars stop you, a helicopter, and you land on the ground handcuffed, and they ask them why your car was stolen. The car was never stolen 75% of the time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So my name is Micah Harris. I'm a member of Community Coalition, which is part of the Push LA. And we thank you for hopefully taking action on this issue. You know, this issue is about pretextual stops. A lot of times, the cars that we drive in are like rolling jail boxes or prison boxes, you know, because we fear that as soon as we get into a car, we're definitely subject to getting pulled over. And it really touches because we're African-American, black and brown people, always are scared to deal with the police in the public. And so every time we get in a car, we're like, you know, we're taking our risk. Because that's just kind of the attitude and the awareness that it has on us. And so when you guys vote on this issue, just take into consideration that there's a lot of fear and a lot of anxiety when it comes to being in the community and being worried about being pulled over. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, council members. My name is Israel Gonzalez-Losa. I'm a proud first-generation Mexican-American, son of immigrants. I'm here representing Chirla and the Coalition Push LA. Push LA has been calling for changes to how the police handles pretextual stops. Our immigrant community is often targeted by these stops. For many of our families, historically, a traffic stop has meant a line to the deportation pipeline. Although we now have protections in the state of California, those fears never go away. When officers use these types of pretext stops, these officers should be trusted individuals in our community. I want my parents to not live in fear of getting pulled over. I want to raise my family in my community while feeling safe. I encourage the council to continue to listen to our community voices and stop these stops. Thank you to Councilmember Marquis Harris-Dawson and Councilmember Yunitz Hernandez for your ongoing support. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Aniela Varancio. I am giving general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Good morning. I am a Chirla member and an immigrant from Mexico. I'm here as part of the Push LA Coalition to put an end to pretextual stops that are used to initiate searches in racially-profile black and brown individuals. We thank the city council for passing the directive move LA closer to ending racially-biased pretextual stops, ending economic extractions through ticket fees and fines, and improving street infrastructure to improve traffic safety. Keeping our community safe also means our communities don't feel targeted by pretextual stops. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to continuing our work to stop the stops. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Grand Rising. My name is Tequila Richmond, Queen Tequila, and I'm speaking on item 16 in regards of our community and the continuous harassment from LAPD and not just Los Angeles Police Department, but all police departments in Los Angeles County, considering Harthorne and Covert City as well. I have been a victim of all harassment. They have took in my cars. And not just that, but also feeling safe in my own home. The Division of 77, Department of Los Angeles Department, has barricaded and kicked in my door looking for someone that didn't even reside in my home. I informed them that that person did not live there. So we need to feel safe, period, in our community. And for me to not feel safe in my own home, for my baby girl to have to say, oh, every time she sees the police, are they going to do something to us now? That's not safe. That's not a good mind state or a mental health for our youth or for us as a people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stop the stops.
Yeah. Good morning, Mariana Magaña, and I'll be speaking on item 16.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
Good morning, council members. Mariana Magaña with Catalyst California, formerly known as Advancing Project, and also a member of Push LA. We are here today in support of item 16, which is the motion for alternatives to traffic enforcement. First, we want to thank the Transportation Committee and the Public Safety Committee for moving this item forward. This motion was first introduced in 2020, and so it's been four years since then, but it's still highly relevant today. Ending racially-biased pretextual traffic stops, ending economic extraction through tickets, fees, and fines, improving street infrastructure that's self-enforcing, and implementing care-based teams can truly build a safe LA. We are looking forward to continuing our work with the city once these directives move forward to successfully complete the reports coming up. The city of LA truly has the ability to be a leader with this motion today and truly has the ability to save lives in the city of LA. Thank you.
This morning, I just come to talk to you about a conversation. A conversation that my father had with me, and his father had with him, and his father had with him. This conversation that as a black person or as a brown person in this country, you cannot move freely. It's a conversation that says that driving while black, driving while brown is an actual thing. It is a trauma that all of us have to experience. It is a fear that all of us wake up with every day, that our cop lights going to show up in our rearview mirror, and when we stop, will we die? Will we go to jail? Will we have an extra tax? And so we stand before you today as Push LA, as people of faith who understand Scripture says you must bear each other's burdens, and ask you to stand up, take courage, take courage to change the conversation. That in Los Angeles, all Angelenos deserve dignity. In Los Angeles, all Angelenos deserve safety. In Los Angeles, we can do something different. Please vote yes on item 16.
Thank you. Okay, so you have two minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
In regards to the transportation report, it was the murder of George Floyd and uprising that followed and the space that made space for this motion to be introduced in the first place. It represents a change that only comes, like so much, it comes in the wakes of policies and practices that are rooted in racism that ultimately kill and criminalize black people. It's policing in general that hails from slave catchers, it's police who show up to auto accidents like the one that killed Keenan Anderson when LAPD showed up. And he is not the only one, and it demonstrates what we know, that these stops are nothing more than a mechanism for criminalization and terror. We demand that not only an end to pretextual stops, but an end to the economic extraction through tickets, fines, and fees, and a significant investment in self-enforcing infrastructure. City Council should not just adopt this emotion for yet another study, but it needs to do so expeditiously. And then you ultimately need to adopt the policy changes outlined by Push LA. These are the strategies that actually keep us safe and represent real public safety. It has been four years in that time Keenan Anderson was murdered. This isn't the ultimate action.
Speaker, that's your general public comment?
Yes, thank you.
If you'd like to speak about items number one or two, you can. We have a lot of people here, which is why we have to --
My public comment is, I'm doing my public comment now. My public comment is regarding Kevin Deleon.
That was your general public comment.
That's what I'm doing now. Can you reset my time for the minute for public comment since you interrupted me?
Thank you very much. You already used it. Your time's expired.
No, it's not.
It's time for the next speaker.
My public comment, no, I was speaking on items on the agenda. My item regarding public comment was about Kevin Deleon, who should not be able to be on City Council the first place.
As I announced at the beginning, item 16 is not open for public comment.
Because there is no room for racist in LA.
So we're taking it on general public comment, so each speaker has one minute to speak about item 16. Please have a seat and be silent for the rest of the meeting, or else you'll be removed. Okay. Whoever is shouting is disrupting the meeting, and they're ordered to remove pursuant to Rule 12.
Hi, I'm Donald Harland, speaking on Agenda Items Number One and Two and general comment.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Can you say that one more time, please?
Items Number One, Items Number Two, and general comment.
Okay, so you have two minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Okay, Agenda Item Number One, the Business Improvement District for the South Los Angeles Industrial Truck Property. I want to remind the city and the people working in the city, and the people here at the city council that are working here need to be reminded also that the BID money is just for cleanup. It's not for developing businesses, it's not for building real estate, it's not for anything like that. The BID is just to clean up. You know, what day the trash man comes by, and what day the street sweeper comes by, and what day the maintenance guy comes by to fix the street light, you know, all that stuff. But there's some misunderstanding about what that is. And there's a belief that you're going to get the cleanup money from assessments from the properties. If the property is illegally developed, you're not able to spend any of the money out of there. There is city workers that are employed to clean up, and they really just need to do their job. There's no such thing as a clean air money that you guys are spending to be doing this. There's no such thing as SEQA. Yeah, that's too bad about Agenda Item Number One and Two. Yeah, it's just money to clean up, and you guys need to make it real clear to those people in there that that's all that's for. And it costs money to do that, you know? I mean, push people out there, I understand that all that cleaning takes time and money. And that's within the city budget. It's not for you to be trying to make contracts or make deals and stuff. I don't know why anybody from BID would be planning real estate development. That's not even something they do. Okay, general comment.
General public comment?
Let's see, there's no such thing as a Historical Cultural Monuments Committee in the city that's to be shut down. There's no Cultural Affairs Committee that needs to be shut down. The Los Angeles County Native American, Los Angeles City and County Native American Indian Commission is not real. You don't even have any Native Americans here. Your Board of Transportation Commission is not real. There's Los Angeles Department of Transportation. The city council is not to be spending money from the Los Angeles Department of Transportation. You're to restore fares to the city ride buses. It seems that the Los Angeles Department of Transportation, the city ride, is overrun with people that are just, it looks like they're doing the job, but really they're causing crime around the city. I'm directing that everybody here working at the horseshoe, working in the city, has their college degrees taken away. And anybody that they gave.
Thank you very much, Mr. Harland. Next speaker, please. Okay, thank you, Mr. Harland. Your time has expired. Your time has expired, Mr. Harland. Please don't disrupt the meeting.
I'm a COCO member. On August 31st, 2020, my nephew Dejean Kazit was murdered in a traffic stop. It is my strong urge, ask from my family, my community, that you take Push LA very seriously due to the solutions that it bring. Black and brown people are being killed every day in Los Angeles over mere traffic stops. My nephew was on his bike, and he's no longer with us. A lot of time and energy are spent and resources are spent in so many ways that are not producing the effects that we need in our communities. I support Push LA. My family supports Push LA along with my community. Please take it serious. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
My name is Ezekia Banguelos, and I requested for public comment on number three.
Okay, so number three is not open for public comment, but you can speak to it during general if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
You can go ahead, but you have one minute to go ahead and speak on that item.
I could discuss it for one minute?
Yes, you have one minute. Go right ahead.
Okay. Marilyn Monroe's house has huge historical significance to the entire world, not just in Hollywood history. I'm suggesting that the current owners should sell the property and use the money to relocate it, and they could buy a newly-built property so that they could save millions of dollars in, so they won't have to pay millions of dollars in renovation. And the house is, it needs to, and the house needs to be turned into a museum like the Anne Frank House in Amsterdam. And it is one of the most important historical monuments in Marilyn Monroe's lifetime. It is the only house that she lived in. And losing the house would be a devastating blow to Marilyn fans around the world. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. May I please speak on both of the bid items and general public comment?
Of course. So you have two minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Thank you, Groot. It's good to see you today. So Business Improvement Districts, I think, are one of the many programs we have in Los Angeles where I believe with the spirit of what the policy is behind, but not with the execution. And I don't think we can argue that the result bears good fruit. Some things that are really good for business that we could prioritize in the Business Improvement Districts are things like heavy pedestrian traffic, which is supplemented with fearless, universal-free public transportation, affordable homes, and accessible parking for workers who do things in that neighborhood, like serve you coffee, or food in restaurants, or run the places where you like to shop for clothes or groceries. Because oftentimes, workers don't have a place to park, and they can't afford to live in that neighborhood. And of course, that contributes to traffic as well when they're commuting from other places. So if we focused on those things, that would be great for business. Things that aren't good for business that we're seeing in both of these districts, particularly in Studio City, where I live really near, to things like empty storefronts, a lack of parking, no public restroom access. A while back, when Nithya and I were still friends, I proposed an idea to her called an urban rest stop or a public resource center, where we collect a tax levy from corporate businesses and build nice, clean public restrooms, and we pay staff to secure them and clean them round the clock. And that would be great for business, because it is unfair to expect them to take the burden of everyone's piss and shit in LA. But we got to piss and shit somewhere, and it would be great for businesses if we could leave the house without having to make a plan for where we're going to use the bathroom. You should hear the things she said. When I tell you, you'll be dead. Because we asked about parking. Nithya said there's plenty. No, she really said that parking's not something we lack. And despite the vacancies, she wants to build more density. And when we gave her two whole minutes to respond, she sneered. She could not believe we would time her speech. She was mad last Monday night. Yeah, we asked about safety, and she said, let's build housing. We need more vacancies last Monday night. We asked if private equity should be banned from owning LA rental property, and she said no. Nithya Roman, last Monday night at the SANK meeting. That's right, she said no. She also said we have lots of parking. I don't know about any of you. I think that's a lie. Shout out to Smoke and Scan, Brock Landers, Stinks, and my loves Andrew and Camille.
Next speaker.
Tony Villanueva, and I'd like to speak on item number three that was deferred, but still, if I can make public comment?
Of course. So you have one minute for general public comment.
Thank you. Good morning, council members. My name is Tony Villanueva. I live in Hollywood, Council District Four. I'm here today to ask for your support in designating Marilyn Monroe's residence in Brentwood as a historic cultural monument, and this is why. Historic: Marilyn Monroe's story isn't even more relevant today. In 1962, for a single 36-year-old actress/businesswoman to purchase her own home was a very powerful move and should be recognized as historic. Cultural: Marilyn Monroe's contribution to Los Angeles and the film industry is landmark. 62 years after her death, her image is still immediately recognized as an iconic symbol of Hollywood. Monument: The dictionary defines monument as a statue, building, or structure to commemorate a famous or notable person or event. That was Marilyn Monroe. Helena Drive was Marilyn Monroe's last home. This is significant because it relates directly to the history of our city and Hollywood. There are lots of options for new development, but it takes years to create character and a history. It's gone if it's left.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Just general comment today.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment.
I hope all those other items that you introduced, that you apparently already had a hearing on, I hope you all watched all the committee meetings, all the public comment, all 15 of you have watched the YouTube feeds. If they haven't, you should reopen public comment on all those items, because clearly the whole council has not heard public comment on them. Because, I mean, literally, public comment is to give our thoughts on these items to the council members. But if the whole council has not heard those items, then clearly they haven't really had a full public hearing yet, because not every council member has heard public comment on those items. So, now I wonder why, why did you remove Baba Akili without giving him a warning? Because you're required to give people warnings before removing people from the meeting. You didn't give him a single warning. And Kevin Deleon needs to go, and this one's for you, Emelda.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Public comment. Yeah, there's no stops with cops. You know, one of the things that is not in this Measure 16 or in this proposal is that the LAPD needs to be removed from these stops entirely. They come with their weapons, they come with all their gear, they come with their excuses to harm and to kill. That's what they want to do as they're stopping these cars. And that's what they are doing. Plus, you know, it makes money for the city. This is a completely ridiculous approach to traffic control, to have cops out there, especially the LAPD. I think they have proven themselves in recent weeks to be the violent armed responders that they are, especially as they have behaved at UCLA and USC. The other thing I want to comment on is that this council has not yet said --
Thank you very much. Thank you. Your time has expired. Thank you very much. Your time has expired.
So like I said, my name is Brianna Vargas. I'm a community college student, and I'm also a former high school dropout. I'm an avid believer that I dropped out of high school because I never had the resources. I was never given the idea that I could join clubs or that I could ever get good grades. And as I see my younger brother going down the same path with the lack of resources, I see the books, the textbooks that he's given, and they are so, so, you could tell they've been used. And this is so confusing to me, because my federal government is giving Israel much support, much financial support for war crimes. And I want to know that my local government is supporting me and all of the outraged college students behind me that are pushing for a ceasefire. Because as I'm going into college under a poli sci major, I'm learning that a lot of the change starts at the local level. Even though these are many heinous acts from the federal government, this is a local issue as well.
Thank you very much. All right. I have now -- Mr. Herman, you're disrupting the meeting. Wait, Ms. Richardson, one moment, please, before you begin. Mr. Herman, don't disrupt the meeting. And for the record, you've been disrupting the meeting, including by using your flashlight to shine in council members' eyes. So you're a hair's breadth away from leaving this meeting. So before Ms. Richardson, before you begin, who's shouting out? All right. I have called all of the real names that have signed up, who are here in council chambers. If you were one of the people who signed up with a ridiculous, obscene, or racist fake name, you are welcome to come up and speak now. Sorry, Ms. Richardson. Go ahead. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
General public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
General house, this concerns deaths from the hundreds of apartment buildings in Los Angeles, especially downtown. I've been told that there are hundreds of deaths from these apartments. The LA County Coroner's Office, they accept bodies every day. I don't know exactly where they're coming from, but they say some of these bodies are lying still, and they get up, and they get up and sit up, and then they lie down and die again. I also heard that these people that are dead get up and walk out the door and don't come back, and go to another apartment house and rent it, and then a few months later, they're dead again. I don't know if these are real people, or if they're regular people that get sick. Some people go into these apartment buildings without money, and they hide in there, without food, and they might be dying in there. I don't know what the causes are. This man from City Watch came in here about two years ago, and he reported to the city council.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I signed up on all the ridiculous names, but I signed up.
Good morning. You have two minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
I wish to speak on all fucking items and my one non-agenda public comment, Mr. Circle K, South Park motherfucker. Listen, in CD9, in CD9, the California Constitution says that current price on California streets and highways needs to provide us with safety. That safety emphasizes between the bids. Now, the conflict of interest is whether or not is Mr. Current Price going to be indicted for his criminal charges? Because if so, then he violates our civil rights to understand the California Constitution that a white fucking bitch -- that a white fucking bitch politician, under BID bid 24-0317, should stop fucking ripping us off. One love, one life. Fuck you, Price. Then, I go into item 16, gross.
Item number 16 is not open for public comment. You can speak to it during general public comment if you'd like. You've been here for the whole meeting, you know that it is not open for public comment.
All right, then I'll go to item 12, asshole.
You can speak on item number two.
All right, let's go to general public comment.
No, I wish to speak on item 12.
No, you're gonna go to general public comment. You have one minute.
All right. So God hates the faggots. The Book of Romans says that is why God gave them up to disgraceful sexual appetites for both their females changed their natural use of themselves into one contrary to nature. And likewise, even the males left the natural use, you females, and became violently inflamed in their lust towards one another, males with males, working what is obscene like you, gross, like you dictator, obscene, and receiving in themselves a full recompense which they do for their error. God hates you, you're all going to hell, you fucking faggots. Put another fucking pole out there so you can hang your fucking flags, cause I want my Confederate flag, I want my Indian flag, and I want my goddamn German flag up there because it is constitutional protected free speech. Fuck you!
That will close comment here in the chambers.
Uh, general public comment.
You have one minute.
I think we should relook at charity boxing. Uh, we could get, uh, John Phillips from AM 790 to MC, since, uh, Marquise is scared and would never reach out to me, uh, maybe Bob will step up. We could have, uh, Brock building that Love Hammer Landers against Bob, you know, I think Eric Eazy-E Preven against Groot, Stacy Trailer Swift-Bollinger against, uh, Nithya. Whenever I hear your name, I think Mike Tyson is saying it. Uh, Doctor dropping truth bombs, Truth Bay against Curran, I do have a price, and, uh, Andrew Ungravener against, uh-
So none of this has anything to do with the business of the council? You're just speaking about members of the public? Speak to the business of the council.
You know, since you're getting a little older in age, maybe, uh, that'll let you feel involved, you know, and, uh, whoever went, if, if, if the listeners, when you guys-
Speaker, you're still not on topic and this is repetitive. It's about the same event.
If not, I will call back.
Okay, that's enough. Next caller, please.
DanielGust.substack.com. You know, on May 28th, I warned city officials of dangerous conditions at L.A. Animal Services, and you and they ignored them. On May 29th, Mr. Krikorian cut off my general public comment because when I spoke on an agenda item, I pointed out that he, uh, admitted gross negligence in a injury that resulted in my having a really bad surgery. Had Mr. Krikorian actually followed public meeting laws, you would have received another warning about violent conditions, dangerous conditions at Animal Services, and the city ignored them until six days after Leslie Correa was mauled by a dog in L.A. Animal Services. The only question is, will she get seven-figure settlement?
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Good morning. Finally protesting the Brown Act violations, I'll speak on items one, two, and general public comment.
Okay, so you have two minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Thanks. Item one is for an ordinance for a business improvement district in CD9 to the benefit of indicted criminal embezzler, polygamist, perjurer, Kern Price, CD9 district. I demand a no vote on this item until further accounting safeguards are instituted because, in my opinion, just like 15 where Sleazy Dawson is pocketing 3 million in kickback money, any funds from this improvement district motion needs further accounting safeguards built into the system of accounting so that Kern Price is not allowed to siphon off the funds into his family business again. These business improvement district funds should be used for the assistance and improvement of the businesses and citizens instead of the benefit of corrupt black politicians like Kern Price and Dawson. Item two is for the establishment of a business improvement district in Studio City. In my opinion, these items should receive a no vote and should not be voted on at all if indicted criminal Kern Price is allowed to vote on these public funds. Further, it is my opinion that this item should five-by-five Uncle Tom hand picked by Norrie Martinez and pink-faced Krikorian Heather Hutt is allowed to vote. This item for a business improvement district and all public business should be voted on by legitimately elected representatives instead of someone like Hutt, who has been given millions of dollars to spread around and buy votes. In my opinion, improving the business district should be the goal of this motion and not electing corrupt politicians Heather Hutt and Kern Price. General public comment.
Okay, you have one minute.
The L.A., yes, thank you. The L.A. City Council is the most corrupt local government in the United States. Not good. Where indicted embezzling criminal Kern Price and Sleazy Dawson to vote daily and appoint unelected Heather Hutt to vote also daily. Public, black faces occupy 20% of the Sleazy Council, yet black women are only 4.3% of the population, but 22% of female rape, 36% of female assault, 33% of female homicide, 32% of female violence. Nearly 50% of the homeless, 50% of the incarcerated, and 50% of the unemployed. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
What we are asking, or what is before us, is a big and significant change for the city of Los Angeles, and I think the city of Los Angeles can lead the nation. The business of pretextual traffic stops, which I will concede out front, I believe pretextual, uh, traffic stops are in fact constitutional, they just unconstitutional, they just have not been tested in court adequately. Uh, but between now and then, um, the pretextual stop is so much a part of being an Angelino, being a Californian, and being an American, particularly if you're African-American, Latino, or part of some other group, that, um, gets targeted by pretextual stops. A little bit of history, and I, I, I by no means wanna be grandiose about this, but, but I do wanna put it in context so folks can understand how deeply felt it is. The pastor, Eddie Anderson, got up and said, "My father had this talk with me, his father had this talk with him, and his father had the talk with him, and his father had the talk with him." Well, you go back far enough, he's actually talking about slavery. And that is in fact the case. During slavery, even in places where slavery was not the case, which was most of the United States, the rule was anybody could stop you, if you were black, at any time and say, "Show me your papers." Does that sound familiar? Show me your papers. Show me that you were in fact not a slave and I should not personally, uh, capture you and send you back to the South. You fast forward now, and this has happened to me, if it's happened to me, i, if, if it's happened to me, it's happened to, uh, probably most of the people in this room. The lights come on, you get pulled over. Why are you stopping me? You crossed the double-yellow line. Are you a gang member? Are you on parole or probation? Can you open the back window of your car? That is an investigative stop. Like, that has nothing to do with the fact that I crossed a, a, a double-yellow line or had a broken taillight or my windows are tinted or whatever. This is the practice, um, and we've gotta move away from that. And again, I say all of this realizing how much policing depends upon the traffic stop, how much policing is done through traffic stops. I talk to the rank-and-file officers in, in my area all the time. I know the amount of people that they catch burglars and a whole bunch of other things through traffic stops. That doesn't make it a just or rational policy. And so, um, there is on the one hand the fear that everybody can tell you about. I don't do a good job articulating it myself, but when you see that car in the rearview mirror, it strikes terror. Particularly if you're in a place where you don't have anybody, it's dark, you might be the only person on the street. That is, that's just the reality. Again, the vast majority of officers are great, but when you're the person in the car, you don't know who's coming to that window with a gun. You don't know what just happened to them before they stopped you. You don't know what kinda day they've had. You don't know what you're dealing with. And so, it is, uh, something that we need to do away with or move away from as quickly as we can, as, um, expeditiously as we can for that reason. But there's another very practical reason. Every police department, including LAPD, when they give you the data, their own data of who they stop, it is always, without fail, disproportionately black, disproportionately Latino. And guess what? It isn't just that you get stopped and you spend extra time dealing with the government in a way that you don't necessarily wanna do. This shows up in who gets traffic citations and who doesn't. We live in a state where you're required to have insurance. Guess what my insurance price is based on? My driving record. So what ends up happening is communities pay an extra tax because of this policy, cause you pay more for insurance, because you're more likely to get stopped and you're more likely to have a, a traffic violation. And so, I am extremely grateful to, um, Councilwoman Rodriguez, Councilmember Hutt, uh, who chaired the two committees that this went through, uh, and kept it going, even though it's been a very slow and arduous process, and it'll continue to be difficult, because this is a big change that we're, uh, putting before. But, but again, I'm, uh, uh, very grateful that folks are willing to, and, willing to have the debate and engaging in the debate and the discussion. And, uh, I believe together, uh, as we struggle through this, as we work through it with our Department of Transportation and with the Los Angeles Police Department, we can get this city to a better place and lead the nation. So, thank you, members, and I ask for an aye vote on this item.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Hernandez, followed by Councilmember Soto Martinez.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I wanna start by saying that I echo my colleague's, uh, Councilmember, uh, Marquis Harris-Dawson's comments. We wouldn't be here without his advocacy and his leadership, and thank you to Councilwoman Heather Hutt and Councilwoman Rodriguez for moving this forward. I rise in support of the dual recommendations made by the Transportation and Public Safety Committee on Alternatives to Traffic Enforcement. I first and foremost wanna thank Councilmember Harris-Dawson again for leading the efforts to introduce a motion back in 2020 that aimed to explore alternative traffic enforcement solutions that do not rely on armed law enforcement. I also wanna thank the community and Push L.A. Coalition for their advocacy to reimagine traffic safety and enforcement, because oftentimes government really only does the right thing when community pushes us to do so, and I think that was one of those moments. We have seen again and again that engaging armed officers to perform routine traffic stops has resulted in violence, racial profiling, community mistrust, and heavy fines and fees. It is a system that relies on the department that already receives a quarter of our entire city budget to do work that can and should be done by other departments that employ unarmed civilian city employees. We know that traffic stops occur disproportionately in black and brown neighborhoods. We know who is targeted by pretextual stops, and we know who bears the burden of the fines and fees that quickly spiral out of control. Alternative traffic enforcement isn't a radical idea. It's a proven strategy. Cities like Berkeley have already begun to implement similar measures with promising results. Implementing unarmed traffic response leads to reductions in violent incidences and increased trust in public institutions. Although there is much work to be done, these recommendations play a crucial role in advancing efforts centered on community safety. Imagine, instead of getting a ticket for your broken taillight, you can drive up to a clinic where they'll actually fix your broken taillight, or help fix the things that are wrong in your car that oftentimes result in fines and fees. And back in 2016, Million Dollar Hoods out of UCLA did a study that showed from 2016 to 2020, the top charges that got women into the L.A. County Jail system were driving with no license, driving with suspended license, driving with no insurance. Even though they were nonviolent offenses, it was some of the biggest driving factors for incarceration of women in L.A. County. Los Angeles has the opportunity to spearhead this movement and adopt the Alternatives to Traffic Enforcement recommendations that were approved by the Transportation and Public Safety Committee. I urge you all to vote aye on this and let us get, uh, let us hit the ground running to do this work. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Soto Martinez, followed by Councilmember Price.
Thank you so much, uh, Council President. Uh, first of all, I'd like to just congratulate you for getting us to this point, uh, Councilmember Harris-Dawson, and the Push L.A. Coalition, uh, for advocating for this work on the ground, and for Chair Hutt, uh, Chairwoman Hutt and Chairwoman Rodriguez for both passing this through their respective committees. I think we heard a lot of testimony about how, uh, this affects, uh, you know, folks who are overpoliced. And look, I'll, I'll speak, uh, personally. You know, I was very lucky to get a car, uh, at, at 16-years-old, that I worked very hard to get that car. But I was pulled over so many times from the age of 16 to 25. And every single time I was pulled over, it was, it was either for two reasons. For some tiki-tack thing that I was supposedly violating, and that was when I was unlucky. And when I was lucky, the police officer would say, "Oh, you know, you matched the description of somebody that we were looking for." It's, like, what happens in, in South Central and Watts and all the, and, and sort of in the, in the, in the West Valley is, is not the way it should be done. And so I think this is moving us in a much better direction, uh, than we have currently right now. So I, I'm looking forward to see how this evolves and how this moves forward, but, uh, nothing takes away the lived experience of many folks, and so I just wanna share that because, uh, the studies show something that a lot of folks that grew up in South Central and in the different working-class neighborhoods, we already know that. And so, uh, so thank you so much again, uh, Councilmember Harris-Dawson.
Thank you. Councilmember Price, followed by Councilmember Hutt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too wanna just thank my colleagues for, uh, raising this important issue. Uh, the efforts of, of the, both committees, Councilwoman Hutt, Councilwoman Rodriguez, uh, the efforts of Push L.A., uh, I think have been significant. Certainly, uh, our, uh, pro tem, uh, has been a real leader in this, and we, we appreciate it. And just to add something else to it, you know, uh, you don't, uh, we, we talked about being stopped, and, uh, you know, I've been stopped with E-plates. With E-plates. And of course, always, you know, apology and, and, uh, uh, concerns expressed by the officer. But nonetheless, the stop was made, uh, because, uh, what they thought was something suspicious. And even, you know, we talk about the, uh, the efforts in slavery and, and, and coming down to current times. We know that in certain Southern California, we had sundown cities back in the day. In other words, you had to be out of those towns, sundown towns, they called them. If you were black or brown, you know, sometimes in areas of the South Bay, Inglewood, Hawthorne, Lawndale, I'm talking about 50s and 40s, 50s, 60s, you would get stopped, uh, just because. And so, this whole notion of, uh, unarmed responses to pretext stops are just so very, very important, really the matter of life and death for some. And so, I'm just happy to support this effort, glad we're moving forward. It has been a long time, but it is an important discussion that we need to have and one that impacts us all. So, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, members, for your support.
Thank you.
I just wanna thank everybody, um, over the years and over the months that it took to put this together for doing the good work. Uh, this is definitely something that I am going to support, and I wanna personally thank, um, Councilmember Price, Harris-Dawson, Hutt, and everybody who's given their personal stories related to why we're being bold and willing, uh, to take on this new way of doing things, because we know that the system is broken. And, you know, I just wanna mention that, you know, what Councilmember Soto Martinez mentioned, what you experienced, you know, you fit the description, you know, that was, that is literally my older brother's story of his life. It, we couldn't go back, we couldn't go two to three weeks without once again him coming home, being like, "I got stopped, I got stopped, I got questioned," all the time, growing up. But my little brother, I remember one day, maybe about a few years after he finished high school and I was in college, and his stories became more about, "I know how to talk to the cops. I taught myself how to talk to the cops." So he was a new generation that based on what he saw his older brother go through, had to consciously adjust and know and teach himself how to remain calm, because he always knew that as soon as you could've gotten anybody upset, that the story was going to end, and it probably wasn't going to end well, and he was gonna cause a whole nuisance for the whole family, cause we were gonna have to go pick him up somewhere. So, I applaud everyone for taking on this work. Um, I'm definitely a supporter, and, um, let's make this happen. I hope everyone votes aye.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I, I wanna acknowledge, uh, Marquis Harris-Dawson's leadership. I want to thank the Chair of the Transportation Committee, Heather Hutt, and the Chairwoman of Public Safety, Monica Rodriguez. Just in short, I heard Mr. Price mention even with E-plates, he was pulled over. I was just sharing with my colleague here to my left, Marquis Harris-Dawson, that as a member of the California State Legislature, as a member of the Assembly, uh, I was pulled over. And I didn't even get the benefit of the curb, or even the luxury of sitting in the driver's seats while they checked my background. In fact, I was put into the backseat of the car. In fact, I was put into the backseat of the car, and I was, was there like for ten, fifteen minutes. Wasn't here, wasn't LAPD, but it was in my own hometown of San Diego, or San Diego Police Department. I remember specifically on Twenty-Eighth Street, Twenty-Eighth and B Street, just a little farther, a little down from the Golden Hill Liquor Store, and, uh, ten feet away from Starbucks, when I was pulled over. Nissan Maxima, dark charcoal gray Nissan Maxima that I was driving. And again, wasn't giving the benefit of the doubt, not even the curb, but the backseat of the car. Well, why are you putting me in the backseat of the car? You know? No explanation at all whatsoever. Eventually, after twenty minutes, you know, he, he let me go, but it leaves something with you, you know, this sense of violation. So I, I applaud the efforts being put forth today, and looking forward to the recommendations that will come, uh, forth, so we can be constructive in how we deal with traffic stops, uh, especially traffic stops that are just partially impacting communities of color. Uh, so we can live in a society that, uh, that you feel free, you don't feel this sense of anxiety, this sense of panic at a moment's notice that when you see someone right behind you, you know, especially if the lights are on, uh, that your life may be in jeopardy. Good points were made, because the vast majority of our law enforcement officials are good men and women out there protecting our community. But we have to acknowledge this as well, too. So I appreciate this, and I too offer, uh, my support and ask for an aye vote. Thank you much, Mr. President.
Uh, if there are no other comments on this item, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Very good.
And therefore, I'm delighted, uh, colleagues, if you didn't know, now you know, to announce that the Los Angeles City Council establishes June twelfth, twenty-twenty-four as Beef Jerky Day in the city of Los Angeles. So congratulations to People's Choice Beef Jerky and the Bianchetti family on this honor, and may your delicious legacy continue for generations to come. Now, I know that my colleagues, I hopefully, if you haven't received your package, let us know, you'll get it as well as staff members here. I know I have the carne seca, green chili, and I have the hot and spicy beef jerky, which I believe is habanero, or I should say the sweet chili habanero right here. We thank you very much, and let's celebrate Beef Jerky Day.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Daleion. Any other announcements?